Thank you.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski. We lost him. He was here? Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo?
Present.
Here, Councilor Sereno?
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo? Is absent. And Council President Keith?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October, I'm sorry, October, August 24th, 2020?
It's ordered. Madam Clerk, Councilor Zambudo is present. Sure. So, we're just gonna just take a brief moment. We're waiting for Ira, Councilor Nowosowski, to log in. There was a change in the Zoom link, apparently. Okay. So, we're just gonna take a quick 30-second break. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three, Comcast, National Grid, RCN and Verizon will appear before the City Council to discuss double poles in ongoing utility work.
Thank you. We have Stan or Dan, it looks like Dan Cameron's available?
And Stan is on phone.
How are you, Stan? You wish to speak first?
Good. Just to give you a quick overview, I think that, quite honestly, we've done a lot of work and congratulations to Engrid for getting their numbers down. We stand at 140 with two in Comcast, Ball and Court. Comcast has 21, Grid is at 35. And then, the municipal third party is at 40. RCN is at 11, and Fire Department, Fire Alarm is at 31.
Okay, thank you. And Stan, Dan, do you have any comments here before we open it up for the council?
No, I think Stan covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilors, we'll go right to left. Councilor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you. I've had several issues that have come up with constituents over the past, you know, month or so in between council meetings, and the three of you have been very responsive and have helped me get all of them addressed in a very timely manner. So, thank you for your help. And one instance was a double pole, and it was fixed within days. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, I just want to compliment the Revere Fire Department and the chief for sending over the communication, telling that they're gonna expedite the many poles that are being kept on in the system, and they're gonna work on them and get them down. I think it's the number of 31 or 33 of them, and it's a good portion of them. So, I compliment the chief for his attention on it and to get someone on it to remove it right away. And thank you. And I think that Stan and Dan are doing a great job in trying to help us alleviate some of these problems. Now, if I could only get National Grid the hell off of Revere Street. They've been there for about a month, and they're creating havoc.
Nowosowski.
Hi, Dan. I have a couple of issues. First of all, in my ward, we have some streetlights that were removed, put LED lighting in there, and a lot of these streets are really dark. They only have 25 watts in them. One street that we're having problems with is Hall Street. It's very dark. It only has 25 watts in each light, and we've had some break-ins there. They're breaking into cars because it is so dark. So, I was just wondering, is there any way that you can change the wattage of a streetlight going forward?
Okay. Councilor, that's a good point you've brought up. I've had these discussions with folks, you know, the staff people at City Hall as well. You know, as you probably are aware, there's close to 3,600 lights that we replaced with LED. The 25-watt LED is the equivalent replacement for a 50-watt sodium that was there previously. That's the recommended, you know, highway standard lighting. That's what we go by when these lights were put in. Obviously, we're achieving energy savings by cutting the actual consumption in half, and the city is getting the benefit of that. So, I think we could take, you know, we don't, we can't go out and just replace every light. But we are working with the staff people as well. We know there were some lights that were put in that just are the wrong size, and we're gonna be taking care of that. But I can work with you offline if there are, especially if there are public safety or crime issues that we can probably look at to try to help out in those areas.
Thank you. I have a couple of issues in my ward, so I would get you the poll numbers and also the addresses. The other thing that I'd like to address is, the last meeting we had, it came up, Socrates was here, and he was trying to address the work that's going to happen on Revere Beach Parkway into Winthrop Ave. I know you're gonna put the streetlights underground in front of HYM, in front of Suffolk Downs, but you are gonna come up the street to Winthrop Ave. So, I'd like to make an amendment with that, like constituency, to have, when you do the work on Winthrop Ave, if we can have it paved curb to curb, probably a block from the corner of Crescent Ave and Winthrop Ave all the way up to Webster Ave in Winthrop Ave, because the street is a mess. And I know probably I'm not gonna get that street done in the spring. So, I'm asking that it would be, you know, a favor to the Beauchamp residents if you could have that done.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. I think, yes, we would agree to that as part of the condition of this major project. I think that, I'm not sure of the exact procedure here, but I think you may have to take that off the table, because I think right now it's been tabled. So, I'm not sure how that would work. But the answer is yes, as we had discussed this today. But how we get that into formally getting this back out for a vote, I'll leave that to you folks.
Okay. And there's just one more question. We talked about new poles. I think that's why we tabled it, this, to go, we didn't take a vote on it, and we tabled it because there were questions about new poles going up in this area where you're working. Can you answer that question for me? Are there new poles going up in any of that construction?
No, there won't be. There could be a handful of poles that will be replaced, but they, you know, 90% or more of this project is underground, where we're replacing existing direct buried cables with a new manhole induct system. I know there was a, as part of this project, there were another sort of reliability project gone and they're cut out. We understand that, I'm getting some background here. We understand that there was, you know, an attempt to have some poles installed down there. We understand the city does not want them. We're in the process of redesigning that part of the project. So, to answer your question, no, there will be no additional poles installed as a result of this project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Councilor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. President, thank you. Stan, welcome. Dan, welcome back from your vacation again. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Same here.
Two months ago, I sent a email to Stan, and he reiterated to you, Dan, about a couple of double poles that were done. The whole sidewalk is still on it, it was not completed with concrete. And one has just dirt in it, and I'll be specific, 34 Dehong Street. The double pole was removed, and the old pole marking is right through the concrete. And they still have asphalt in the rest of the home. And also, at 1540 North Shore Road, there was a double pole there, and the ground was still not repaired. But these are old poles. They're probably not even on your books anymore. I do want to thank you, Dan, for working on that Florence Ave double pole, and National Grid did through theirs. And RCN is next on the list, but they have been working on it. I thank you for that thing. But what concerns me is several of the poles that have over 1,000 days of activity. And I think, you know, that's something that National Grid should be pursuing with whoever is next in line to take the wires off, because three, four years is not acceptable.
Counselor, if I could?
Yes.
Just on the, you know, I'm looking at the list, as I'm sure you are, and a number of these are third-party non-participating. And that ends up being, for the most part, municipal wire from the school department that has, they've never registered with NEDS or applied for an Attachees license with us. And I've been trying to get that squared away for a number of years, but I'd like to have a side conversation or meeting with the councilors on that, and perhaps the mayor's office, so we could get ahead of this, because a number of those poles that you talk about are, you know, over 1,000 days, and they're city wires.
Well, let me say this. About, when did we meet? About eight, nine years ago, when nobody was on the system? You know, I took the efforts and put us all together, and we did. And that's why we're together today.
Right.
National Grid, Verizon, Fire Department. And I understand what you're saying about those non-compliant, mystery-
Non-participating.
Mystery wires that are on the pole, because they know this is a lot. I think we also get, have to get Chief Bright involved. We have a contractor that moves these wires for us. And if these are city wires, whether it's school department, fire department, police department, we should be utilizing that contract to move those wires. They should be involved in this system, be on here, so they can log in and know what's ready to be next in line.
And I will tell you, Counselor, it's at no cost to the city to be part of this system if you have wires on those poles. And I'll give you one quick example. One, if you look at Belle Island Avenue, that's a non-participating third party, and that, of course, runs towards the Beauchamp School. So, you know, I think the school department or the IT director should be part of this as well, so that we can properly identify who's got that.
Right. And I don't disagree with you. The only problem is, it does cost us money, because the contractor that we hire is a hiree, and you guys are costing us to make this happen.
No. They're not our route.
Double pole. You're not making the double pole, but us.
Right. But every Attachee is responsible for their transfer. And the fact that you attach the poles without licensing means that you haven't even had it inspected by, you know, our safety engineering department. So, we're hopeful that they're in the right place. I think, you know, let's work on who's got them. Let's get them identified, and then let's, then we can kind of argue about who's doing what. But let's make sure that everybody's getting noticed.
I can live with that. And we'll talk to the mayor about setting up a meeting with everybody involved.
Great.
Put this thing together. We have to get RCN at these meetings with us, because they're the slowpoke still.
RCN's on the-
Counselor, we do have Mr. Ortiz from RCN here.
Oh, good. Glad to hear that.
So, Counselor-
Man, it's the first time, Mr. President, that RCN's been on my list.
It is. We welcome that. Do you have a question for Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, I do. Mr. Ortiz, on Florence Avenue, phone number 721. You're next in line in that. And that's one pole that's been sitting around for about four or five years. And I know you just got on, but it's still time for you to move, make your move. So, I'd appreciate if you could work on that Florence Ave location.
That would be complete, that would be completed by the end of the week.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils? Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak directly to the gentleman from RCN.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Yes. I received a call from a couple of constituents down in the Sowers Bryant Street area last week. They had lost their connection, their service with RCN, and probably for 12, 14 hours. And they called RCN, and my understanding is that they never even got a call back. So, can you address to me right now what the situation was back about a week, week and a half ago in that area in Revere? Was there a problem with outage?
There was. We actually had a pole fire in Wakefield, which is where the feed that feeds Revere comes out of. It actually burnt the fibers for Revere, Everett, and Peavody.
Okay. And when something like that happens, is there somebody there that can speak to the customers and let them know exactly what's going on? So, they might make other arrangements if necessary?
They should be able to call the 1-800 Ring RCN number?
Well, apparently, they called the number, and they didn't hook up with anyone, and they were just walking around their house for 12 or 14 hours with no service coming out of the house. And to me, that's something that's unacceptable. You know, RCN, I know they worked hard to get into the city and offer some competition, but that type of competition certainly is not something that's desirable in this city. And I'd like you to take a message back to your people in the main office, whatever it might be, your executives, that there should be a number and somebody, when you lose service like that coming into the city from another city, there should be somebody available that can give the person that's calling in, that's losing their service, a rational explanation as to why they are losing their service. They shouldn't be walking around their home for close to a whole day without any service. So, I hope you would take that back to them, and I would hope you would also get me a number of your service, your executive office, that, from someone that can direct this a little further, and where I can give to a customer when they call me and they have a problem, a problem, we'd like to have it addressed. I shouldn't be calling back and forth to get some satisfaction for a customer. That's your job. You're providing the service. And I hope you would take that into consideration, and you would get a number to me through our city clerk, where I can contact somebody that can give me rational explanation when this happens, if in fact it does happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just want to get Councilor Morabito, then Councilor-
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you, Mr. Ortiz?
I'm doing well. Yourself?
Welcome, after a year of being invited to here.
We do apologize, and I will be the direct contact for any meetings, or any questions, or anything I can help you guys with for RCN.
Mr. Ortiz, after the meeting, can you forward your contact information to the city clerk? This way, the city councilors will have a way to reach out to you.
Absolutely.
A lot of the concerns I've received from customers are, after RCN does an installation on a pole, there'll be wires left dangling. I'm not sure if you were made aware of that at all?
I was not. This is the first I've heard of it.
Yeah. Well, it's, it happened a lot ever since RCN came to town. We're grateful that there's competition, don't get me wrong, but at the same time, we want, when an installation is done, we want companies to clean up after themselves as well. With that said, is there any local RCN hub where people can pay their bills instead of online?
The closest location is Arlington.
Arlington. Are there any plans for a local hub to come to Revere?
They've talked about getting something closer. Nothing has been decided upon, but it's been talked about.
Okay. Yeah, that would sound, that would be something that citizens have, would want as well, so, in the near future. And that's all I have to say. And if, once again, if you can leave your contact information with the city clerk after the meetings, this way my colleagues and myself can get ahold of you with more concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Sereno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Stan, Dan, welcome, and to Mr. Ortiz, welcome. Dan, I just want to say, start out by saying, I want to really thank and express my gratitude to Faith, because while you were on vacation, I had a couple of issues arise, and Faith was really good with getting a streetlight repaired, as well as low-hanging wires tightened up. And thanks to Stan, too, because on the low-hanging wires, Stan Verizon went right out there and took care of it. So, thank you to Faith and to you, Stan. Dan, I do have some outstanding issues I wanted to discuss with you. Mainly, first and foremost, actually, would be Pole 2409 at 357 Washington Ave. That's the double pole that's been leaning at the intersection of Washington Ave and Sergeant Street. And honestly, it looks like it's being held by a buckle. I've been talking about this pole for months, and, you know, one really bad storm, I think, and that sucker could come down. So, is there, are there any plans to fix that, or where do we stand with that double pole? I know I have a laundry list of double poles, but right now, that's the one I'm really most concerned with in my ward.
Yeah, that pole, Counselor, we did look at that from a safety standpoint, and it is fine, although it may not look so, but it is fine. It is in the works to be replaced. I can find out exactly when we'll be doing that, you know, it's been pretty busy here over the summer, but we'll be getting to that.
Great. Thank you. And then, another thing, I know Councilor McKenna touched on it, about the adjustment of the LED lights. I'm glad that that's, you know, starting to happen. It's just for the ward councilors, we've been calling, and we understand, you know, it was gonna maybe be in the spring and then the summer, and it keeps getting pushed back. And I'm getting calls from residents who have been calling me since February. And with all due respect, Dan, it makes us as ward councilors look ineffective, that we can't get these lights just dimmed or brightened, dependent on the request. So, I do hope that, you know, hopefully, before the end of the fall, that will be complete. Would that be correct, in assuming citywide?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor. And the reason, it's not that we're, due to lack of action, this, the conversion of all these lights to LED was a major project for us. It was bid out to a contractor, and we really had to wait until the contractor was completely finished. We did not want them hopping around, changing lights and so forth. We also wanted the residents of the city to get used to the new lighting, because sometimes it's, you know, we've had experience in other communities where, once people get used to it, they understand that it's a new lighting level, and some of those issues, you know, do go away, but some do not. And so, between both of those schedules, we really haven't developed a really good list of lights to be adjusted until now. So, to answer your question, we have a good handle, working with several councilors, you know, over the last few months, that we'll be addressing that this fall, and it'll be up and running before the winter.
That's awesome to hear. I'm very glad to hear that. Thanks, Dan. Another thing, 52 Sherman Street, which I know I touched base with you about, this goes back to February, I think. This was just the simple replacement of the rusted rubber, the rusted metal piece that was on the outside of the wire, because the family has children there, and they're just, they're nervous if the kid is outside playing, that they could get hurt on the rusted piece. I know we've talked about that. Did that get replaced? I haven't heard from the resident, but I know you had said it was supposed to be done within a few weeks, and just confirming if-
Not yet. Not yet, Counselor. I did talk to the overhead department today, because I figured you would be asking about them. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yep.
Okay. I did, I did speak with our overhead department yesterday, because I figured that that would be coming up. We have not done it yet. We are gonna replace the entire guy wire and the anchor. And I've been promised, again, it's been a very busy summer with other work, but I've been promised that that will be done very soon, probably in the next couple of weeks. But it'll be brand-new, with the yellow plastic, much better to look at, and obviously, it'll be, you know, people will be able to see it easier as well.
Fantastic. One final thing for you, Dan. On Salem Street, and I know Councilor Nowosowski can attest to this, as the chairman of the Public Works Subcommittee, National Grid went ahead and replaced, or added, two more light poles right at Sully's curb, right as you're, you know, turning toward the nursing home after Overlook. And I have to be honest, number one, that curb, as you come down and you head toward, you head toward Revere, from North Revere, going almost toward Route 1, it is really dark there. And, you know, if you guys added poles, maybe you could add a couple of lights to those poles and brighten it up a little bit. The other thing on those, last year, my predecessor, Councilor Patch, worked diligently to get a speed sign, a, one of those solar speed signs. And the way the poles that National Grid installed, it looked so stupid. The pole is in front of the speed sign. So, you can't even, you don't see your speed until you come right up on the sign. So, the way those were placed, and they were placed without the approval of the council, which that in itself was an issue, but, and that I'm gonna have to work on, you know, through another avenue with that speed sign. But is there anything we could do to maybe get some lights on that, on that stretch there?
Sure. I would just need, you know, that, I think that most of, that goes to a council order. So, if you get the pole numbers and put it through as an order, and then send it to me, once it's approved, then we can get those lights installed.
Okay.
And Counselor, I don't know if it's on my end, but I'm having, I'm having a lot of difficulty with the connection here. I don't know of any side of the council that's having the same difficulty, but you keep going in and out. So, maybe it's on my end.
I'm sorry. You've been fine-
Dan, are you, are you able to hear, Counselor, clearly?
Yes. Yep, I can hear you clearly. And that's, I'm actually, I'm all set with National Grid. So, thank you, Dan. But for Mr. Ortiz, one quick thing. So, Mr. Ortiz, I know you're gonna leave your contact info with the clerk. I just want to bring your attention to, as Councilor Morabito said, in my ward, in West Revere, on Malden Street, all around my neighborhood, there are wires that I can only assume to be RCNs at this point, because National Grid, Verizon, and Comcast have checked them out, and the only common denominator is RCN hasn't gone out there. And aesthetically, they look awful. They make my neighborhood look really crappy as you're driving through the Malden Street area. So, I can get you the pole numbers, and if you could have RCN go and look at that. I don't know what you can do about hanging wires, but, you know, I really don't want them wrapped around the poles. That aesthetically looks, you know, not, not appropriate in my eyes. So, Mr. Ortiz, I will, I'll get that information for you, but it's nice to, to meet you, albeit virtually. So, thank you.
Same here. As soon as I get the information and pole numbers, I will have somebody write them out, and we'll dress them up to the standard that they should be.
Great. Thank you. And that's all I've got, Mr. President. Thank you for the leeway.
Thank you, Counselor. And I know we're running a little bit long here, so I wanted to thank Stan and Dan and Mr. Ortiz for being here and welcoming. And, Mr. Ortiz, I hope that you'll be joining us each month when we do this. As your initiation, you will be responsible for taking Stan, Dan, and Angela out after the next meeting. But, in all seriousness, Mr. Cameron, I did just want to, and I know that- Um, but, in all seriousness, Mr. Cameron, I did, just wanna, and I know that the, the other councils, my fellow councillors McKenna and Serena mentioned this, but I, I've sent a few emails in regards to, um, Hancock Street, Fennel Street, and a couple, uh, lighting situations with the new LEDs. I know that people have gotten used to them, so the calls have subsided, but there are a few that just don't make sense, and, uh, obviously, when you go from, you know, really, really dim, 25, and then the next pole, for no rhyme or reason, is much brighter, and then the next pole is, is, you know, there's a few that, that are just out of place that we need to get right, so I'd like to work on those. Uh, and then, um, the only other thing that, you know, just wanted to kind of bring up, and I know later on, there's a public hearing that's scheduled for, um, a new street pole that, um, is supposed to be put up on, uh, Yemen Street. Um, the public hearing notice just went out, uh, come to find out the public, uh, the pole has already been put up. Uh, understanding it may have been for an emergency reason, and I, I get that, um, I, I would, I would have probably been in favor of it, but I'm a little, it's a little, um, disheartening to find that the pole is put in, even for, under emergency purposes, without notifying, you know, maybe myself or some, uh, key stakeholders, so that we can talk to the residents and say, hey, this is why it has to happen. I hate being surprised, I'm sure you do, too, uh, no one likes that, so, just in the near future, or any time in the future, if you have emergency poles going, going up, if you can reach out to the city council and let us know that it's happening, so that we don't find out from the neighbors, um, after the fact. And that's all. Sound good?
Good.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, close this side of the hearing.
Count's item number four, public hearings. Hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amounts of $6.7 million for Phase 11 construction, IIIDDE, pump station, and drainage.
Thank you, this is a open, this is a public hearing, and at this point, we're gonna open this up to any, uh, proponents? Any proponents?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Council President, this is Bob Button with CDM Smith. Um, I am on the call this evening, along with Don Caramella, Nick Reistrom, and, uh, Bob O'Brien, uh, to speak to these loan order items, and also to just provide the councillors with an update on the consent decree status and the various activities that we've been undertaking. Um, so I don't know if Donnie or, or Nick Reistrom have, would like to say anything before we get started, I have a quick PowerPoint presentation, I, I know many of the councillors, and, and a lot of you have seen this information before, I wanted to provide you with a quick update, and then for the new councillors, just give them some background and some information and the status as to where we are. So, um, if you'd like, I can get right into the presentation, or, Donnie, would you like to mention anything before I get started?
You know, I'll just get into the PowerPoint presentation first, and then see if councillors have any, you know, questions, um, but, um, you know, I, I had, we had, um, I pretty much, um, gave a kind of an overview of what's, what to anticipate with the, with the PowerPoint, so I think just get into it and, you know-
Yep, let's roll that presentation, Mr. Button.
Sure, great, thank you, I'll, I'll start to share my screen now. And I just wanted to say good evening to all the councillors as well, it's nice to see many of you virtually, I haven't seen a number of you for several months, and it's, uh, it's nice to be with you tonight.
Good to see you. Madam Clerk? She has screen, great. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Yep, I'm just getting on the PowerPoint itself, here, here we go. Um, so again, I'm here this evening with Don and, uh, Nick Reistrom, and to give you an update on the consent decree activities and the work we've been doing in the city of Revere. I wanted to just provide you with a quick update on the requirements of the consent decree, brief summary of the completed and planned investigations, as well as construction projects. I give some kudos to the great work that the city staff has been doing with CMON, operating and maintaining the city system and all the new pipes and, and pump stations and whatnot. Uh, try to give you some updates on some of the benefits and results we're seeing from the investments the city's made to date, quick update on the consent decree, and then, um, any questions you have on the various loan orders that are before you. Uh, the, the consent decree itself is an enforcement action that was taken by the United States EPA and the Department of Justice, working with, uh, the Mass DEP. The consent order itself was entered in November of 2011, and we've been working very diligently for a little bit over a decade with the city to address the issues that were outlined in the consent decree, which were predominantly related to sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, as you'll hear me say during the presentation, as well as illicit discharge detection and elimination, and then finally, uh, infiltration and inflow, water that shouldn't be in your sewer system. The upper picture on the right is an example of a sanitary sewer overflow that we, uh, had in Revere several years ago, and in the lower right is an example of, of illicit discharge that we were looking for in the drainage system. The consent decree was set up to address significant public health issues that existed in the city when we had rain events. The compliance is required by a federal court order and is enforceable by a federal judge with, uh, penalties, significant penalties for non-compliance. We've been working very cooperatively with EPA and DEP throughout the consent decree, and we continue to work with them on the schedule and, and the projects that are going to be implemented. Um, this, uh, some of the first work that we did was really to try to triage the system and get a handle on what the problems were, where they were located, and what needed to be done about them. We did a hydraulic model of the wastewater system, and looked at the capacity of the pipes to collect flow and to convey flow to the MWRA.
Mr. President.
Back in 2010 through 12, we did some triage and initial investigations that are shown in the figure on the right, in the pink, green, and yellow colors, and we really tried to look at prioritizing roughly 15 areas of, of 35,000 feet of sewer each throughout the city, so that we could prioritize and fix the worst of the worst first. Right now, we're in, uh, the 11th year of investigations. Each year, we investigate the areas that will become construction projects in the following year, so we have current and accurate information. We've been working on, uh, illicit discharges throughout the city, sump pumps and inflow sources throughout the city.
Mr. Button, thank-
Yes, sir.
Uh, councillor Rotendo, as a, as a point.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, Mr. Button, this is the project in which, uh, HYM is going to be helping facilitate, uh, some of the processes that you've spoken about over the past, I don't know, decade now, uh, is that correct?
Um, this is just a summary of the city's work under the court order and under the consent decree, one of the projects that we're looking at-
And we're well aware of that decree, sir?
Yes. Yep, and one of the loan order projects, um, looks at, uh, capacity and conveyance, and we'll get to that very quickly, so I'll move this along, councillor. Um, I just did want to touch again on some of the good work that's been happening in the city, and that the results of those work, uh, of that effort has, has paid off quite a bit in the city itself, as I'm sure many of you know. Um, bear with me just a second, uh, page down. Uh, part of the issues we're looking at, this image here just gives you an idea of the type of problems that we have in the city. There are multiple, from, uh, issues on individual properties associated with sump pumps, roof leaders, broken pipes, two issues associated with broken and cracked pipes in the city streets, and pipes that are connected, stormwater that's connected in the wrong locations, those types of issues. This, uh, is an example of some of the inspection work we did back in, uh, 2010, uh, September of 2010, almost to the day, um, looking at, uh, pipe along American Legion Highway in Revere, and you can see quite excessive amount of extraneous water getting into the system. To date, um, out of the 98 miles of sewers that exist in Revere, we've metered the entire system, done flow isolation, smoke testing, cleaning and inspection of a roughly 450,000 feet, and lining with new in situ lining of roughly 380,000 feet, which represents about 75% of the city. Uh, we've completed inspections of the manholes, done spa repairs, updated the GIS and pre- created the mapping, uh, like is shown here, as well as updating 13 wastewater pump stations and doing a lot of work in individual homes. Uh, one of the big things we've been doing in the homes is trying to remove sump pumps, they're out of the roughly 11,000 properties in the city, we've been working to identify and properly remove the sump pumps and connect them to the drainage system. A big issue in removing sump pumps is the extra water that is, um, pumped into the city sewer system, which then becomes, uh, a, a cost to the city. As you can see from the calculations that DEP does, that just 28 homes, uh, will result in over a million gallons a month not going into the sewers where it shouldn't be. In addition, we've completely addressed all of the wastewater, the 13 wastewater systems, we've done major repairs and upgrades to the mechanical equipment, we've put in standby power generators or provisions for generators, and we've automated the alarms, so that we get, uh, alarms when there are problems, and we get weekly summaries of the various activities and work that's been done at the stations, similar to the charts in the bottom-left end corner. The ongoing projects that we have right now, there's four active construction projects occurring throughout the city, four different contractors, roughly 14 million in work ongoing now. To date, we've completed roughly 38 projects, working with the city, over, uh, nine years of construction completed to date, roughly 12 different contractors, and approximately $92 million in completed work in the city's infrastructure. One of the other big elements of the consent decree, pardon me, is the, um, is the city's, uh, CMON program, their operation and maintenance. It requires a lot of effort between multiple departments, uh, Donnie Caramella and, and the gentlemen and the wa- and ladies in the water sewer drain department have been doing a phenomenal job, taking charge and addressing the, the assets that the city has. They've been provided with new equipment and, and additional staff, and mechanisms to track progress, that you'll see in just a little bit. One of the things we need to continue to work on is some enforcement of local code and regulation requirements, and bats oils and greases and restaurants and that type of thing. Uh, this'll give you an idea of some of the equipment and the work, the city's, uh, closed-circuit TV inspection truck, uh, the new repair water truck, and, and just some of the activities and emergency repair work that the city's crews have been doing themselves, instead of hiring outside contractors. Um, one of the other things that's quite impressive, when you look at the city of Revere's website, and the results for Revere, uh, tab, is the amount of activity and, and work orders, and how quickly they're being closed, so the, the DPW and the folks in the water sewer drain division have really stepped up to address the operation and maintenance of the system. And, and as a result, the city has, has really benefited from a lot. The systems have been stabilized, the city's infrastructure isn't falling apart in our hands, not only the sewer and drainage work under the consent decree, but also a lot of work's been done on the water system. Significantly reduced average daily flows to the MWRA, down roughly 15%, which represents millions of gallons a year. We've substantially reduced sanitary sewer overflows, in fact, we've eliminated them, um, with, uh, the last several months, addressed multiple illicit discharges where people's sewers were discharging into the stormwater into the rivers. We've improved, improved the quality of life for the residents in the city. I know in the first early years, we would go out during rain events, and there'd be multiple problems, and a lot of those issues have been addressed. The CMON, which was a major compliance issue in the consent decree, has been addressed, and, and really the city's meeting your obligation.
Mr. Button, Mr. Button, we have a few councillors, so this being a public hearing, we, we'd like to kind of cut, cut to the chase here, we want to get some community input, as well as, you know, you're, you're going over the last 10 years of progress, which I think has been tremendous, but we're looking to, to, to talk about the upcoming work, and, uh, some councillors have some questions, and if you can kind of cut to the chase, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely, councillor, very quickly, uh, I'll just, uh, get through, uh, I'll skip to the chase here, in terms of, uh, in terms of where we're at in the schedule. Um, roughly to date, the city spent, uh, 125 million, has been appropriated for the construction investigation works. Uh, in the last 18 months, there's been zero sanitary sewer overflows. We've had a couple of rainy years, and we've had no problems with sewage running out into people's home and across, homes and across the ground. And the remaining work is, is roughly four to five years of completing the last of the rehab in the city, some pipe, large pipeline work, and then, the, the big issue that we're trying to look at and trying to help the city with is the wet weather storage and treatment, which is one of the projects we need to look at. This year, the three loan orders that are before you, there are, uh, two planning projects, the first is related to, uh, in, Phase 12 investigations, this will provide the money for us to work with city staff next year to do the investigations that are necessary. Um, and then the, uh, Phase 11 construction, will provide money for construction projects next summer, based on the work and investigations we're doing now in the city this year. Um, one of the things that's, uh, very beneficial to the city in terms of the SRF program is principal forgiveness. For your construction projects, the DEP will provide 9.9% in principal forgiveness, this means for every dollar, uh, or every hundred dollars you buy, you only pay back, uh, $91, basically, um, so that's an important thing for the city. And then the last project is the planning project to look at regional capacity and, and/or storage, uh, alternatives for the city to connect to the MWRA. Um, this will, is the final step in addressing and fully resolving the consent decree requirements. By completing this work, we're hoping to shorten the overall timeline on the CD, and help the city to reduce costs to millions of dollars in costs that you might otherwise incur if the storage option is, is required, and really looking to support the city's goals for growth and development in the future. So those are the three loan orders that are subject to the public hearing tonight, councillor, and thank you for your time, I just wanted to give you all an update on the great work that's been done.
Thank you, and I know that you're putting all three of the, um, plans together for the public hearings, um, clearly you're a proponent, um, but I wanted to make sure we gave an opportunity for some people, people to ask questions. Uh, being an open hearing, uh, we wanted to open, keep, continue to open for proponents, uh, any proponents wishing, wishing to speak on the outside, I see one hand raised. Um, Mr. Lampadecchio, you here? As a proponent?
Hi, good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, Eric Lampadecchio, 43 South Platte Avenue. Uh, I have more of a point of inquiry, is this the 10-year, 100-million-dollar project that the consent decree is referring to? Is that the initial consent decree?
The initial ti- consent decree, uh, well, Mr. Button, if you wanted to speak on that, but, um, this is part of the entire process of what's required for the consent decree, correct?
Correct, yes, I just provided you an update on the city's work over the last 10 years in addressing the consent decree, that's correct, Mr. Button.
Okay, I, I just remember, uh, former ward six councillor Charlie Patch used to always have some questions on this topic, and I thought last time that this came up to the council, they had reached the 100 million dollars, so I'm just curious, how many millions of dollars over budget has this project gone?
Um, we're, we're actually not over budget, um, sir, we're, we're, uh, it's a complicated project that's taken many, many years to address, um, in, in fact, we're coming in below budget on, on many of the projects, and, and I'm sure Donnie or Nick Reistrom can speak to that from the city's side.
Well, we'll, we'll go to that, but I just wanted to kind of, this is a pro, just asking to speak, are you, and, are you in favor, are you a proponent?
Yeah, I'm always in favor of infrastructure repair throughout the city, I think that's a great thing.
Thank you, so any, uh, thank you, uh, any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing, uh, Nick Reistrom.
Uh, can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, good evening, um, councillors, um, haven't seen, uh, some of you in a while, it's nice to see some of your faces. I wanted just to, uh, speak in favor of, uh, the loan orders that we have in front of us. Today, as you know, um, we've, uh, been through this, uh, on a, almost on an annual basis, um, with regard to the, uh, the construction loans and the investigation work, um, that then, uh, precipitate, uh, the next year's construction work. Uh, that's what you see in front of you today, as far as the Phase 12 investigations and the Phase 11 construction, um, and then, uh, in addition to that, the regional capacity, which, um, you know, will give us an, an opportunity to, uh, look at, um, some other alternatives to some of the, uh, projects that we're gonna, uh, need to be, uh, undertaking in some of the later years of the consent decree, and, um, possibly, um, find, uh, some ways to, uh, you know, replace some of those larger, uh, big-ticket items.
Thank you.
And so, because of that, I'm a proponent for all three of these loan orders.
So, you're a proponent, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, all right. Any other proponents, we see, uh, Mr. Tucker? Mr. Tucker, do you wish to speak? No? And then it looks like Bob O'Brien.
Indeed, thank you, Mr. Councillor, um, my name is Bob O'Brien, I'm Director of Planning and Development for the city of Revere, and I stand very much in favor of all three of these, uh, loan requests. I would particularly note the significance of the third one, which is the feasibility study related to the, uh, capac- regional capacity of our system. Um, this study, um, should provide a mechanism to make a direct connection between the Revere system and Deer Island through Boston. Uh, if it is successful, as we expect that it will be, it will be the result of a great deal of cooperation between Revere and Boston, as well as with HYM, since the root of the direct connection will likely be through Suffolk Downs. Uh, if this is done, um, it will eliminate the need for probably $50 million or more of interim storage capacity that would otherwise be required. Um, I defer to Donnie, Nick, and others, Bob, in terms of the technical issues here, but I will say that every indication that we have had after weeks and months of negotiation with all of the interested parties, is that this really is the permanent solution to Revere's, uh, sewer disposal problem, which has come, uh, quite unexpectedly, but quite fortunately for the city of Revere, and I think- And I think it is a worthwhile investment in a feasibility study that will point the way for a long-term and permanent solution to our problems. So I very much support all three of these orders, but the last one in particular, um, because of its significance for our long-term strategy and cost and schedule. It should take, I think, five to 10 years off our compliance, uh, schedule for compliance with the consent decree.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Still being an open public hearing, any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none. Oh, Tom Charamella. How are you?
Hi, Council Chief, uh, Don Charamella, 215 Rice Ave, uh, Chief of Infrastructure. Um, so, uh, and just in short, just to echo, um, um, Ms. O'Brien's sentiment is that this is what it's doing, is it's creating a shortcut. The feasible, feasibility study is basically just to, um, to, uh, understand that, uh, our approach to go through the HYM site to create a shortcut to get us to Deer Island quicker than the other communities going through Chelsea. And, um, you know, this would, it would alleviate the construction of three, um, uh, large capacity storage tanks that the city would need to gather, uh, um, uh, the extra, um, sewage during rain events. So these, these tanks are something that we don't, it's an avenue that we just don't want to go down. So, um, this, this would, this would create a, uh, a, a, a regional solution to, uh, to, and probably get us out of the consent decree sooner and, uh, with some, some significant savings. So, um, I am very much in favor of it.
Thank you. And any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. And any councils wishing to speak? We're gonna start on this side, Council of Powers. I always go right, I'm gonna go left this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Button.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, my, my understanding is now that, uh, sewage, uh, when it leaves Revere, it goes to Chelsea and then proceeds, uh, uh, ultimately over to Deer Island. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, it goes down Eastern Ave and Chelsea through the, uh, the headworks and the pump station and then out to Deer Island. That's correct.
And, and the, uh, size of the pipe that carries this, uh, into Chelsea, uh, is, am I correct in saying approximately two and a half, three feet?
It's actually, uh, larger than that, sir. Um, it's, it's five or six feet in diameter. There's a massive conveyance pipe on Eastern Ave. The pipe that goes to it's about two and a half feet and then it's quite large once it leaves a structure C, um, which is, is, is a hydraulic structure that the MWRA controls in Chelsea that creates hydraulic issues and backups in Revere depending on the size of the storm.
And that's a five, that's a five-foot di, in diameter pipe, pipe, pipe. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir, yes.
Okay. And, and what feeds it from Revere is a three footer. Am I correct on that?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. So, uh, going through Suffolk Downs, uh, when it, when it gets to Suffolk Downs, it'll be going through a, a five foot, uh, a new five foot, uh, tube or pipe, whatever you want to call it?
I, I believe it's actually an 18 or a 19 foot diameter tunnel. It's a very, very large pipe that it'll be flowing into in the MWRA system.
That's the pump, yeah. Okay. Now, let me ask you a question. Uh, we're, we're being asked to spend, uh, $6.7 million. I would imagine that's what that $6.7 million is for, am I correct?
Uh, no, sir. That 6.7 million is to complete improvements throughout the city that, like we've been doing every year in, in everybody's wards. In, in addition to the, the big, the regional connection, the city had several years worth of work to do. That was part of the presentation I was running through before where we showed all of the rehab work, all the new pump stations. So that $6.7 million is giving us money to do work in various areas within Revere, fixing your pipes, pump stations and other parts of the city's infrastructure.
Okay. Now, when it gets to, uh, when it, when it gets out to Suffolk Downs, uh, will HYM be contributing, uh, monies toward the cost of this?
A lot of those details are yet to be worked out, but the expectation is yes, that there be a, a shared cost if in fact this is a solution that'll work. It's not, there, there's several things we're looking at going out through this Suffolk Downs or the HYM site into East Boston is one. There's also opportunities in North Revere to send flow out through Malden as a way of taking some of the pressure off the, the system in Revere and some of the MWRA's regional bottlenecks, if you will. So we're gonna look at several different alternatives to help Revere save money and get out of the consent decree faster as part of that study.
Now, this new system that you're talking of, is that gonna give, uh, is that gonna get raw sewage out of the city, uh, faster and is it gonna increase the capacity of the, uh, pipes that feed that?
It, it will take flow out of the city faster and eliminate the problems that we have when you get a very large rain event in the city, yes.
Okay. All right. That, that more or less sums it up. I have one other question. Could you, could you give us a, a figure now, uh, an approximate figure as to how much monies are gonna be expended to, uh, complete that system once it, uh, once it gets to Suffolk Downs?
That's part of what the study's gonna help us look at, Counselor. Um, we don't have all those numbers fully developed yet. The objective would be, as, as, uh, Mr. Charamella and Mr. O'Brien were indicating, uh, to avoid tens of millions of dollars in storage tanks by coming up with a pump station that would cost less, um, or connections that would cost less than the storage tanks. So part of the study is to give us those answers so that the city can make an informed and intelligent decision on what's the best option for the city moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, after hearing, uh, Bob Buttons and obviously the, uh, most important part of it, which is the regional aspect at HYM, I would suggest that we expedite this and, and vote that up now, please.
You know, I, I think that there's still some more questions, but I, I would be very much tru, truly in favor of voting on this tonight. I, I'm pretty certain that the, um, that Don Charamella reached out to all the councils to explain this project in depth because I know it's a, it's a, it's a big project, but...
As did Bob O'Brien.
I would imagine there's a lot of questions that have already been answered. Any other councils over here? Councilors, am you?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, so just, uh, just for a little clarity, because there was obviously a little, uh, confusion, the first two loan orders are for the normal, uh, nightmarish, uh, ridiculous consent decree that we're stuck with. Uh, but the, the important one is the, uh, uh, number five, which is, which is the alternative, uh, wastewater elevation planning project. That's rather exciting, if you can ever be excited over wastewater. Uh, it's, uh, it, it has the potential of saving us probably in the ballpark of $50 million in maybe several years off the consent decree. So, uh, I'm in favor of all these and I certainly want to vote on these tonight because it's important to get moving here and, uh, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino, and then Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I will be brief in my comments, but I will just give people a little backstory on this. So this issue came about when I first got on the council, uh, some time ago, and we've been, basically, the city is dealing with years and years and years and decades of neglect. So the reason why, when you see these numbers come across the council and you see, you know, three million, four million, five million, six million, it's, it's really hard to comprehend, but the reality of it is our sewer lines and our water system and infrastructure has been neglected since, you know, it can go back as far as the 1950s. So Revere had some very serious issues and we're under a federal, uh, consent decree that we physically have to make these things happen. So it's unfortunate that our generation is getting stuck with the bill, but we are. Um, I will say, in summary, uh, Don Charamella called me about this and gave me a great, um, overview and my response was, okay, so in three words, basically, what you're saying is it's gonna save money and that's what it does. So essentially, by voting for this tonight, what it is doing is it, it's taking, um, a really complicated system that basically our wastewater is going through this indirect kind of channel and making it from point A to point B. Number two, it's gonna be more cost effective for the city in terms of the money we owe for the federal consent decree. And, uh, number three, it, it's a great opportunity with all the development that's going into, uh, HYM to make sure that our residents down in Beaumont in that area aren't seeing an impact on their service and, and, uh, water pressure and flow and things like that. So I definitely think that this is important. It's important that it goes through, but just so people know, when you see those dollar amounts coming by, which can be kind of overwhelming at times, um, that's what it is and that's the reason for it. So I'm in support of it and thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McCall.
Someone's got a good voice.
Mr. Reistrom has a beautiful young daughter.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is for Bob Button. Mr. Button?
Good evening, Counselor. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Long time no see.
Yes, it is. Too long.
I'm still not seeing ya, so, um, I just have a question. Um, are you overseeing the project that's down in Beaumont, uh, with the sewer, uh, construction?
The ongoing construction work now with the pump station? Yes, I'm not personally doing it, but my staff is involved working with the city on that. Yes, ma'am.
Right. We have a problem down there. Uh, so, um, we didn't have a place to store heavy equipment and these large cylinders that are going into, um, the ground. And so they stored them in, um, Leverett, on Leverett Ave and, um, uh, Broad Sound Ave. Uh, people, I, I, they live it with that. Uh, a lot of people can't see going around the corner because it's taken up, uh, a quarter of the street. So I was just wondering, uh, is there anywhere that you can move that off of the main, that, that street and put it somewhere? Like I, I talked, I think I talked to Donnie about, uh, the VFW. Um, I've been calling the Our Lady of Lourdes Church to try to get the, um, there's a parking lot in there that's not being used. No one's been answering me. So I have been trying to get a location, uh, for this heavy equipment, but to no avail. So I was just wondering if we could have that moved somewhere safer than out in the street?
Um, absolutely. We'll talk with our construction folks, folks first thing tomorrow morning, Counselor. I, I was also working with Mr. O'Brien earlier today, looking for some available land areas where we could try to address that concern that you have, um, and, and help get the project done. Some of the equipment and some of the materials is just what's needed on a daily basis to get the work done, but...
Sure.
Clearly at the end of the day, we need to, you know, we need to prepare the area and make sure that it's safe. So I'll speak to our construction folks about that in the morning and myself or Donnie will reach back out to you.
Just one more thing. It's been there all summer. So it's been there since I think April, May, something like that, and it's still there. Now we're in September, so, uh, and it's, uh, what's happening is people are using, uh, the cylinders for garbage cans, you know, to put their litter in. Uh, there's holes in the street now, so, um, the street's inundated with, uh, it needs repair. So these things are happening, so I just hope they can be resolved.
Yes, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that and try to address it, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
She thinks she has problems. I was having to get in the dirt in, in Ward Three, deposited there, uh, butting the marshes and lo and behold, I, uh, got a hold of, uh, Donnie Charamella and told him that, you know, this is completely unacceptable. Uh, he came down and reviewed it with me. He had no idea that they were doing that and, uh, with his great assistance, we're getting that dirt removed. And, and there were mounds and they were about to, uh, deposit in that area, mounds and mounds of dirt. So, uh, there's a lot of work, I think, in this major project that didn't have any advanced thinking for the amount of money being expended on this. Uh, didn't have a location to dispose of the dirt properly, didn't have a location to put in place the equipment. Uh, I think these projects got to be reviewed and, uh, need to have, uh, further assistance and they have to have advanced, uh, warning for the neighborhood before they inundate the neighborhood, as is happening right now at National Grid on Bosom Street, major trucks all over the place. So, uh, I think the city of Revere is, is, is not being treated fairly and I think we gotta speak up about this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just want to remind everyone, we have, uh, three, uh, public hearings in front of us, uh, three different approvals. I know that a number of the people on are in favor, um, so we're just gonna stick to that, but, uh, if, if we shall, it looks like there, the will of the council is to vote on this tonight.
Roll call.
Uh, roll call.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $6.7 million for Phase 11, for the Phase 11 construction project? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes, and also, Madam Clerk, would you enter for the record? Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Chair Michael Tucker was in favor of this project as well. Thank you.
Loan order has been approved. Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amount of 1.3...
Ashley, I'm, I'm sorry, Ashley, there was a, a loan order and a resolution associated with that as well?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
Mr. President, can we wave of reading?
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Calling the resolution relative to the loan order in the amount of $6.7 million, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amount of 1.3 million dollars for the Phase 12 Investigations Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, being a, uh, public hearing, wish to open this up to any proponents? Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Raise your hand.
Uh, Mr. Keith, I would just speak as a proponent and offer my presentation earlier. Obviously, thank you.
So I would imagine, uh, and I, I know for the record, uh, yourself, uh, Don Charamella, Robert O'Brien and City Engineer Nick Reistrom are all proponents.
That is correct, Mr. Janino.
Any other, any other attendees wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. And any councils wishing to speak?
Roll call.
Roll call. Motion to approve?
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of 1.3 million dollars for the Phase 12 Investigations Project? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes.[1668.11] the Phase 12 Investigations Project? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Voting yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution has been approved.
I don't, I don't believe there was a resolution.
There should be a resolution with that loan order as well, Mr. President. There should be a loan order and a resolution for each of them.
Correct. Apologies. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Wave of the reading?
Shall the city council approve a resolution relative to the $1.3 million loan order? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Is absent.
Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution has been approved.
Yes. If she already hit the gavel.
Calendar item number six, hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amounts of $750,000 for alternative wastewater evaluation planning project.
Thank you. And, uh, being a public hearing, we're going to open this up to any proponents. Any proponents wishing to speak? Raise your hand.
Good evening, Mr. President. Again, Bob Button, uh, my prior presentation, um, addressed this issue and I'm speaking as a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise with the other proponents for the previous resolutions and proposals.
Myself, Nick Reisstrom as well.
Nick, uh, Nick Reisstrom is in favor. Bob O'Brien's in favor. Michael Tucker's in favor. Nick Reisstrom, is your daughter in favor?
Yes, she is.
Wonderful.
I think, I think Donnie Chermello's in favor as well.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Councilors?
Move the vote.
Madam Clerk, this would be, uh, to vote on the resolution as well.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amounts of $750,000 for the alternative wastewater evaluation planning project? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The loan order has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Resolution.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, so ordered.
Roll call on the resolution. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution for the $750,000 loan order has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. President, and, uh, I will follow up with the councilors as I indicated tomorrow on the, some of their questions. And if anyone else has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me if I'll, I'll help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Button.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called as ordered on a petition of National Grid and Verizon to install two jointly owned poles and relocate one jointly owned pole on Yewen Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This being a, a public hearing, uh, I know I spoke about this a little early, I'm just going to open this up to any proponents. Uh, any proponents wishing to speak? I believe, um, Dan Cameron from National Grid is here. And Sterling Nash?
Yes.
Okay. Are you a proponent?
Yes, uh, Counselor Dan Cameron from National Grid, uh, proponent. This is in connection with, uh, providing service to a building on this street, um, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron's in favor. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the, well, I would actually just want to state for the record, uh, Chelsea Johnson, the neighbor where the pole is located in front of, um, just wanted to state some displeasure for not, um, not having, uh, been notified in a timely fashion, uh, due to this pole being installed with, uh, an emergency order. So, uh, we want to make sure that we can communicate this a little bit better next time. Close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak? And, uh, again, I just want to also, Mr. Cameron, again, I think we have a good relationship. This is in Yewen Street, some Ward Four. I would have, uh, really appreciated the heads up on this project. I would have probably been in favor of it, understanding that the, it was holding up, uh, a project, but, um, it would have been nice to have been communicated. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the petition of National Grid and Verizon to install two new poles and relocate one pole near 14 Yewen Street in accordance with the plan on file? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Absolutely.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
No.
Voting no, uh, the petition for National Grid and Verizon has been approved. Uh, next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Mr. President?
Counsel Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met and I would like to take each of the individuals in order and have a roll call vote after every application. First being 20-27-9, appointment of J. Pandea Construction as a licensed drain layer. That was placed on, uh, to be tabled at the advice of the Chair, uh, for non-appearance, then place it on the next order of business. Next is 20-21, 281, appointment of Rashid Mukhabir, Mukhabir, I'm sorry for mispronouncing that, to the Human Rights Commission. The subcommittee voted unanimously to vote it out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Rashid Mukhabir to the Human Rights Commission? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The appointment of Chief Callahan has been confirmed.
Next is 20-283, appointment of Lynn Alexis to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably by the appointment subcommittee. Roll call.
On the appointment of Lynn Alexis to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Voting yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The appointment of Lynn Alexis has been confirmed.
Next is 20-284, appointment of Timothy Bogerman to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
On the appointment of Timothy Bogerman to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
No.
No. The appointment has been denied.
Next is 20-286, appointment of Karu Peach for the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
On the appointment of Karu Peach to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
No.
Yes. The appointment has been denied.
Next is 20-286, appointment of Karu Peach for the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
On the appointment of Karu Peach to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Voting yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The appointment has been confirmed.
20-287, appointment of Dr. Lorenzo Garcia to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
On the appointment of Dr. Garcia to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes, and Council President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Twenty dash two eighty-eight, appointment of Fire Chief Bright to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. Roll call.
On the appointment of Chief Bright to the Human Rights Commission, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Twenty dash two eight-nine, appointment of Laura Holmes to the Planning Board. Members of the council, there were six members present voting on the subcommittee. It was a tie, three to three. I ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
On the appointment of Laura Holmes to the Planning Board, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Powers?
No.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor, there was some feedback, I apologize. Counselor Powers is recorded as voting no. Counselor Rotundo? No, Counselor Sorino?
No.
No, Counselor Visconti?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
The appointment has been denied.
Wow.
Count, I'm sorry.
Twenty dash two ninety, appointment of Juan Pablo Hermelo to the Planning Board. That was voted out favorably. Roll call.
On the appointment of Juan Hermilio to the Planning Board, Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes, yes, yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? No, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
And finally, Mr. President, twenty dash two ninety-one, appointment of James O'Brien to the Planning Board. That was voted out favorably by the subcommittee. Roll call.
On the appointment of James O'Brien to the Planning Board, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Is one yes okay?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Anytime.
The appointment has been confirmed.
Mr. President?
I voted for you.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to thank the Appointments Subcommittee for all the work that they've done over the past couple of weeks, and for their hard work that they put into the appointments and the seriousness of their positions, and we thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, motions?
To motions, calendar item number twenty, motion presented by Counselors Visconti and McKenna that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Pastor Nick Grenitzis of the First Congregational Church on the occasion of his retirement after forty-six years of service to the city of Revere.
Wow, good guy.
Counselor Visconti?
Mr. President, if you don't mind, to Madam Clerk, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion and include the entire council. I think it would only be just so for that to read from the entire council, if my colleagues don't object. And I will save my remarks for the presentation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
I also will save my remarks for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-one, motion presented by Counselor Morabito that the city of Revere implement a local eviction moratorium beginning October seventeenth until the COVID-19 pandemic subsides. This motion is being submitted because the city's unemployment rate is eight times higher than last year's rate, and a moratorium will protect the city's most vulnerable residents, citizens.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. As most are aware, this, the coronavirus has hit the state and the country very hard, especially our own city. As of October seventeenth, the statewide moratorium on rental evictions expires in Massachusetts, and I would like to take emergency action and have a local moratorium, being that our city went from a three percent unemployment rate to a twenty-five percent unemployment rate. That's eight times greater. Our, the most vulnerable citizens are affected in our city, in our community, and we need to do something to protect them. We can't have them on the street, and we need to be there for them in a time of need. So, thank you. I hope I have my, the support of my colleagues on this.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor Morabito, I want to start by saying I think that this was very well intended, and I hope it goes to committee. Unfortunately, the way it is, I can't support it, and part of my concern of that is what the state's done is it's not only eviction, but it's eviction and foreclosure. And the issue I have with this is that, especially in the city of Revere, we have a lot of people that are landlords that are present in the city. Maybe it's, you know, an elderly couple that rents out their in-law, or maybe it's a couple that owns a three-family that they rented. And what's, what's happening right now is that these families that have always paid their bills and paid their taxes are having tenants that can't pay their rent, and they're ending up putting mortgages on their own homes because they can't pay for their properties anymore. And I think it's, it's-
Make an amendment?
I, I would, I would just want to work on it in committee. I just think that we really need to make sure that-
Counselor, are you asking to amend it to be a foreclosure moratorium and eviction?
Point of information, Mr. President. State your point. Thank you, Mr. President. Local mandates have no guidance or legal authority on a state, or for that matter, federal housing law. I would suggest that we put this in committee, that we work collectively on this. We submit it to the state legislature and go forward from there. We also have to have safeguards for homeowners that are being left in the dock in the sense of the economic plight of the people that are being rented upon, as well as those that are, for that matter, owning the property. So, it's a, it's a double whammy. It's the eight times the, you know, unemployment rate that we normally don't see in this community affecting the workers and those people that rent, as well as the people that own. This is something that we have to deal with in a collective measure, because if not, what we're going to see is a catastrophic event in which the renters aren't going to be able to pay the homeowners, and the homeowners are going to lose their home, and that's going to have a cascade that will be unending. I suggest that we work on this in committee. We send it to state legislator, as well as Representative DeLeo, the Speaker. Thank you, and thank you for the allowance.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor-
Really quick, I think I still have the floor. I just want to thank you for that, Mr. President. And again, Counselor Morabito, I think it was well intended. I by no means want to, you know, affect that. I just hope it goes to committee because I want to make sure it really is, you know, in the best interest of all residents, considering what's happening. And thank you to my colleague for clarifying.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils?
Well-
Counselor Morabito?
So, so Counselor Janino, are you saying that you are not in favor of it because there is no moratorium on a foreclosure?
Point of order.
Counselor, I understand that. He's just asking counsel-
Go, Counselor, please speak.
Counselor Rotundo?
I thought this was going to committee.
Yeah, I'm sure it could. It will. I'm sure it will.
You know what? Maybe Counsel Rotundo should put-
Counselor Morabito, Counselor Morabito.
Run for council president.
Counselor Morabito.
If he wants to run the meeting.
Counselor Morabito, thank you.
To answer your question, Counselor Morabito, thank you through you, Mr. President.
Can everyone just mute their mics? Counselor Janino, you, you state your point?
Thank you through you, Mr. President. Counselor Morabito, that is one amendment I would like to see. However, I do wish to discuss this in committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I say-
Counselor Morabito, do you want, do you want the floor?
I would like-
Counselor Morabito, state your point.
Time is of, of the essence on this. October seventeenth, this expires statewide, and I think citizens in our community need that sense of security and to see that we as elected officials have their back and are going to stand behind them and try to do everything we can to make sure they don't get evicted. And if Counselor Janino wants to make an amendment to this, to include foreclosures as well, I agree, because people shouldn't be losing their homes in a time of need, especially in this city where our unemployment rate is the second highest in the Commonwealth. We need, we need to act. I, I would like to vote on this, but if we, if it's the will of the President to put it in committee, and I'd like to take it up before the expiration date of October seventeen.
Thank you, Counselor. I would say that me, my personal feelings is I would like to discuss it in committee, only because there's so, I mean, there's so much detail that I would want to map out. I'm def, I definitely don't want to see people being put on the streets. And the good news is, I don't believe anyone's being put on the streets, but there is some urgency behind this, in the sense that this needs, this would need to go into Legislative Affairs and discussed in, I would hope, the twenty-eighth. It can be discussed further, mapped out, talk about how we can protect the renter, but also the landlord, because sometimes these aren't these big billionaire, millionaire landlords, like Counselor Janino mentions. Sometimes it's a mom and pop that, you know, just helping to pay their own rent. I mean, my neighbors are the same way. They rent out their, their, their second, their one, their basement apartment, their legal basement apartment, and they wouldn't be able to afford the mortgage otherwise. That's why they bought the two-family. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, I don't want to steal Counselor Morabito's thunder, far be it from me. I just want to suggest maybe it might be productive to draft a letter and send it right now, you know, this week to Governor Baker, Speaker DeLeo, Senator Boncoria, and Rep. Vincent, and ask them to extend the eviction moratorium and foreclosure moratorium, given how serious the situation in Revere is. I think that, in the immediate term, would have, would have a good, good impact. And if memory serves, you have a great style of writing letters, so I'm sure you would be able to do that.
Can, can we put that to a motion?
So, on your original motion, if we can vote in, in favor of placing this in Legislative Affairs for the next meeting, Chair of Legislative-
Can we have a roll, can we put forth a resolution on, I want to put forth a resolution on the table right now. Does anyone second it?
The resolution being, Counsel-
A letter in support of extending-
Point of parliamentary procedure?
The statewide.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. Mr. President, I believe Counselor Sorino has a separate motion that would be enjoined with Counselor Morabito, and Madam Clerk, please correct me if I'm incorrect. My suggestion would be to put yours in committee, take up the, the motion that you and Counselor Sorino had spoke about for a one-month moratorium passed, the October seventeenth date, to send a letter to both the governor, the Speaker of the House, as well as Representative DeVincent, I mean, excuse me, DeVincent, Vincent, and thinking of my old first sergeant. I think I already knows him. Anyway, that said, I, I think that would be a-
Saying that we're in support of an extension. Correct.
So, all, all in favor of the resolution? Counselor Morabito's resolution, all in favor?
And Counselor Sorino?
And Counselor Sorino and Counselor Morabito's resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by Counselor Keith that they may request the License Commission to reduce the license fees for 2021 by fifty percent due to the loss of business caused by COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr., Madam Clerk. I know that Counselor Novoselfsky wished to speak on this, but also I, I see on Zoom that Mr. Celovich, who is the Chair of the License Commission, is wishing to speak, so I'll let him talk. Mr. Celovich? Let's unmute him. Hold on. There we go.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor. The reason why I was calling basically was to just to let you know that there has been some discussion with the members of the License Commission and the mayor to mitigate some of the fees that have been incurred by licensees who have been forced to close due to COVID-19. So, one of the ideas that's been floated and one that the mayor likes, because it actually adds the potential to reduce the fees by more than fifty percent, would be to prorate the fees based on the cost of the fee and a per-day average, per-day cost, actually. And what that would turn out to be was that for the people who had paid for 2019, a liquor license of $3,000, if they had been ordered to close for eight months, nine months, that's going to round out to about a $2,000 rebate based on an $8.22 per-day cost. So, the, the idea would be that, that rebate would be applied to next year's license, so that the license for this year would cost X amount of days based on the cost of the license per day. And the money going forward, the money that's already been paid by the licensee, would then be applied to next year's license. So, that was just an idea that we were thinking about, and it's one that would mitigate some of this and also reduce the fees for, like I say, more than fifty percent. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Celovich, and I wanted to state that, that, that would be, you know, obviously, the businesses, the business community that I've spoken with, most importantly, not most importantly, but more specifically, the restaurant and hospitality industry that's been severely impacted by the COVID closures. This isn't due to a lack of demand. This is due to a lack of ability. You know, it's not like people aren't going out. They can't. You cannot sit at a bar, and you cannot have full capacity. So, whereas some businesses are being reduced by demand because people aren't going into the city, or people aren't traveling as much, or people aren't using certain, certain types of, you know, hospitality industry, you can't go and sit at thirty seats of a bar. You know, so if a restaurant has sixty or seventy seats and thirty are at the bar, you can't actually sit there. So, then not only are they losing capacity by having to completely separate their restaurant or, or their establishment, you can't sit at a certain amount, amount of the table. So, it's not because of ability, I mean, it's not because of demand, it's because of the ability. So, this, that would be excellent, so I'm glad that this opened the door to that conversation. I know that I'd be fully in favor, and I would imagine the council would be championing right behind you. So, thank you for starting that topic. I know Counselor Novoselfsky wished to speak, and then I see a couple other attendees wishing to speak. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm glad, I'm glad this came up, because it was under discussion with me besides people that have businesses that people visit, that couldn't visit over the last six or seven months. You just mentioned a lot of the food places and many other local businesses, but one particular category is the community parking lots. And these people have lost all their business because people haven't been going into Boston. And I know there's one lot, you know, at the old Caravan Club office, Wonderland Marketplace, they have sixty spaces in the lot, and I go by there every day, and if they have three or four cars in there, in any particular day, it's a lot. And I think they should be included in this fifty percent, or whatever we want to ratio, or whatever we want to call it, to include that, which basically is going out of business. There haven't been any cars down there in the last three months. And I know that it's going to close anyways next year, because of, yeah, probably new building being built there, new apartment house. But I would, I would like to see that these two right now be included in any rebates that the council wishes to present to the License Commission, and hopefully the License Commission will accept it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any council, any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor Morabito?
Mr. President, is your motion all, to reduce all license fees or just food and alcohol license?
Specifically, I was relating it more towards the alcohol, the $3,000 liquor license fee, because it meant, again, some bars or clubs aren't able to use that, they're not able to fully use their license. Again, and it's not because of demand, it's because of ability. You can't use it, right? So, and I'm not saying that a car lot isn't the same, but, you know, it isn't. It's, they're based on demand. The city's not limiting them. The city actually has nothing to do with, they're not limiting, they're not saying you can't use the lot, but they are saying, the city and the state are saying you can't use a bar, right? So, that's why, I'm not saying that I don't want to, I wouldn't be in favor of the, the License Commission doing something to help other businesses, but this was more specifically geared towards restaurant and liquor-serving establishments that are paying a full $3,000 license.
My concern is the verbiage in, in your motion just says license fees.
Right.
You might want to change that to be more specific, because if we take a vote, we're voting on reducing license fees for 2021, not-
Well, the good, the good news is it looks like the License Commission is starting to act on it. But I, yeah, so we can amend the motion to be more specific. If, so actually I'll, I'll, I'll ask to amend it to liquor license, alcohol.
So, point of information, there's four different types of liquor license, club, veterans' clubs, in holders, package stores, and restaurant slash bar. Those are the actually five different types.
So, alcohol licenses to restaurant, bar, club establishments where there's in-premise consumption, to be more specific, on-premise consumption. Package stores is actually, those guys have made out the best lately.
Yeah.
All right. It looks like we have an attendee, Mr. Lampadecchio, wishing to speak?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. You know, it was just last city council meeting that I was before you, asking to reinstate Counselor Visconti's motion, and now tonight you have two motions up here to help the residents out. So, I just want to take a moment and commend Councilors Morabito and Keith, and then Councils as a whole for taking this up and prioritizing getting some relief for our residents and businesses. Thank you.
Pardon me? Can you, can you repeat that?
I wanted to commend you and Counselor Morabito.
I love when you commend me. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any other councils wishing to speak? So, Madam Clerk, would you amend it to, to state for on-premise alcohol licenses?
Mr. President?
Counselor Novoselfsky?
They may also include commercial parking lots.
And to include commercial parking lots. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
All in favor on the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Motion to suspend, motion to suspend rules. Counselor Rotundo wishes to take up. All in favor of suspension rules?
Aye.
So ordered. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, the benches down at the MBTA area on Revere Beach are creating a bit of a problem. I believe Bob O'Brien and other people within community development know this. I have been speaking to them about it. Unfortunately, there are people that are using those benches for illicit drugs, among other things, and scaring some of the commuters, as well as our local families down there. So, I've asked that the city request the MBTA to remove those benches for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, and more specifically, Counselor Rotundo's talking about item number twenty-seven, and-
Mr. President?
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor, thank you for taking, bringing that up. The two benches involved, that we, we see them all sitting, the two colored benches next to the MBTA bus stop, and I believe those are city benches, because I believe we put those in there about ten years ago. And I've already requested through 311, the DPW, remove those two benches. Now, what's inside the bus stop is another issue. There's two, two seats in there. Now, whether or not you want to implore the MBTA to take those two, that single bench out of there, that's another issue also. But, you know, I've already started working on that, and I thank you for the support, and hopefully the DPW will get rid of them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Counselor Novoselfsky has been extremely proactive on this after speaking to Bob O'Brien. I mean, this is his wad. He knows these issues better than I. I would tell you the steel benches that are in the thoroughfare there, that's also another breezeway, that they're actually, I unfortunately hate to use this terminology, shooting up and drinking and defecating, and it's quite a problem.
Understood.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Understood.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Understood, Counselor. You know, I was also talking more about the benches over at Flaherty Park, but you are correct about the ones in the MBTA walkway, which I had taken out from the other end about four years ago, because the same thing was happening then. So, I agree with you, and I hope they take them out quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor? So ordered. Return to, return to regular business?
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by Counselors Rotundo and Keith that a certificate of commendation be awarded to Officer Raul Goncalves for his actions in preventing a potential tragedy in June when he saved the life of a toddler who ran into Park Avenue.
We'll save this for the night, but Raul Goncalves, which you may know as an ever police officer, who had some heroic acts on Park Ave, so we'll, we'd like to, we'd like to give him a certificate of merit. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that they may request the Election Commissioner to appear before the City Council to discuss early voting in mail-in ballots.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
I wanted to experience voting early, so I took it upon myself to go vote early. And what I did is I went in, I received my ballot, and I received a folder, to which on the folder it stated that I'd state my name, write my name and address, and, and sign it. When I voted, I placed my ballot inside this insert, I gave it to an attendee, and they, they sealed it. So, my concern is, and I spoke with the Election Commissioner today, what happens when my vote is counted? How does it get counted? Well, she said somebody opens it, and they count. So, what happens to the quality of keeping it private? Person that opens it knows my name and address, and if they're curious enough, they see who I voted for. Now, the Commissioner said that, oh, you know, they, they have so much they don't, but if they have an interest in Art de Guanasso, who's an elected official in Revere, and they're opening ballots, I would kind of be, have a little curiosity as to how he's voting. So, they have the, they have the, the window of opportunity is there for someone else to view your ballot. I don't care what anybody says. I don't think that's right. I think we all should have the privilege of a secret ballot. What's so secret about putting my name and address and signature on, on a ballot and it's opened by another human being? It's not secret. So, I would like the Commissioner to come up and explain to the community, and I've had several people who had the same experience. They said, what's so, what's so private about that? Someone can open it up and see how I voted. And I think that's a personal, personal privilege that you deserve the secrecy of, and I think it's important. So, I hope that the council votes in favor. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Guanasso. Janino?
Close. Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion, and I support my colleague.
All the G's down there.
We know that Ms. Collet does a wonderful job at what she does, and I'd be happy to have her come before the council and explain it to us. I also have some other concerns about privacy. Actually, on Election Day, when I was voting, one of the poll workers actually instructed me to flip my ballot over so it could be scanned, when as an elected official, I know that you don't have to do that. You can just put your ballot in either way. And that gentleman said, no, it doesn't go that way, and like looked over at my ballot as I was trying to put it in, which made me feel uncomfortable. So, I can't imagine how that would make someone else feel. So, I look forward to discussing this.
Thank you. Any other councils? Motion to approve? So ordered.
Aye.
Calendar item number twenty-five, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that they may request the DPW to install crosswalks on Ward Street in the interest of public safety and at the request of area residents.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, I had a neighbor on Ward Street suggest to me that there's no crosswalks on Ward Street, and in particularly, there's no crosswalks on Chargers Street. Now, with all the new development that has occurred in that-
Charger Street. Now, with all the new development that has occurred in that particular area, the Ward Street apartments and so forth, there's quite a bit pedestrian traffic there. And there's no public safety way to can, to cross the street. Now, this is the second or third time that I submitted a motion, that I get a call from the administration, an employee of the administration telling me that we're thinking about doing that. But I wanted to bring this out before the, the council tonight and before the public and before the in the information of those and residents in that area, to let them know that I honored their commitment when they asked me to present this to the council. Now, if the city counts, if the city is doing something like that, why didn't they call and notify the board council and say, hey, look at buddy, we're doing something in your ward. Kind of nice if you know about it. Uh, and we're doing crosswalks instead of me making a motion, and then they call me up and want to explain it to me. What good does that do for my constituents?
Uh, Mr. President?
And so I kinda take exception to that, cause this is the second or third time this has happened to me. Happened with the Charlie passes. Oh, we got this, we got it in place. We just never told you about it.
Hey, Councilor?
Point of information, we lost, uh, TV, so I'm getting messages from people at home that Revere TV went out. They're getting an error message.
Maybe that Comcast has dropped you in the middle of talking.
It must have happened because of you, Councilor.
Comcast, so maybe it is time.
Mr. President, I don't think that was, you know, by accident.
Nor do I.
It may be, maybe it is time for us to, who knows?
Oh, all right. So.
But, um, but the point, the point being is if they are taping this, and maybe people will view it thereafter, is I, I don't like the effect that every single time I put a motion in, I get a call from someone, oh, we're working on that, we're doing that. What the hell's that do for me? You know? I mean, I represent people, and they wanna hear from me and what I'm doing for them, and this is what I'm doing for them. If they're doing it, God bless them.
Thank you, Councilor. All in favor? So ordered.
Yeah, another beauty.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Council Guanasso that the mayor requests the traffic commission to install no parking here to corner signs on Folsom Street at the corners of Broadway and on Broadway at the corners of Folsom.
Mr. President, another incident where people on Folsom Street try to leave Folsom Street, they can't see, their, their visibility is cut down completely because cars are parking right to the corner. So if anybody wants to challenge as to how that's possible, just come down Folsom Street and try to make a left or a right. You can't see. You take your risk in, in, in pursuing, proceeding out into a Broadway, and you know how risky that is. So, uh, but my record with the traffic commission is like zero, 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 eight. So, uh, I hope that they, uh, view this and do what they wish with it.
Thank you, Mr. Council, uh, Mr. Guanasso. We have, it looks like a resident that has their hand raised. Um, I'm gonna let you, open you up. We're allowed to talk. And that's, uh. Hello?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Joseph Guller, owner of 843.
Yes, how are you tonight? Very good, thank you.
I'm owner of 843 Broadway in Revere, kind of a Broadway in Folsom Street. I've been there since 1984. Built my building in 1984. Um, was told I can build a garage as long as I had the parking, so I got the parking, I got the garage built with the intention that I had parking all these years. Um, I would be against, uh, you know, we have a restaurant that's licensed for breakfast and supper and dinner. And right now, with the restaurant business as it is, is hard enough with anybody trying to open up a restaurant. So any parking that will be taken away from us will really hurt the business. Um, it's never been a problem, uh, to, to my knowledge until tonight. Um, so I oppose it. Uh, it's hard enough being a business as it is today. Um, especially, I don't know anybody that will wanna open restaurants, but we have someone that has a restaurant that [bleep] needs all the help they can get. And I think hurting them by restricting a little bit of parking that they have, would, would put them out of business.
Understood. Thank you. So you would not be in favor. Uh, and of course, this would uh, more than likely go in front of the traffic commission. I know we have Council Novoselfsky wishing to speak, but it looks like a couple more residents. Uh, Council, uh, Novoselfsky?
How you doing?
I may?
Hi.
Council Novoselfsky?
Thank you. Good. Hey, Joe. Joe, hey, how are you doing? Um, but let me, let me say this, you know, and I can, I can appreciate, uh, Joe and Joe, and Joe and I have been friends for 15 years, 50 to be exact. And may I say that no parking here at corner is not a city law, it's a state law. And technically, you don't need signs to enforce 20 feet from the corner in. It's up to the city to enforce it, whether, you know, it's a public safety, consider it a public safety. All one has to do if they wanted to is put in a 311 to the sign department, and they will install no parking here to corner. Now, whether or not the parking department is enforcing those particular rules is another thing, where there's some restrictions on what they do as far as only public safety, things like crosswalks, fire hydrants, fire zones, et cetera. Now, whether or not they're enforcing the 20-foot mark from the near corners, I, I'm not sure. But it's a state law, and if people read the driving rules, it's in there. No parking 20 feet from here to, to, from the corner out.
Right.
Anywhere you go. So take it from there.
Understood. Uh, it looks like we have a few other residents wishing to speak. Uh, Mr. Satin?
Okay. Hi, my name is Jay Satin, 385 Broadway, Revere. I represent Joseph Guller, who is in a butter on the corner of Folsom and Broadway. Mr. Guller, uh, built the building he has there in 1983, and he has owned it and run his own business there for, well, he, he doesn't run his own business any longer. However, he has run his business there, and currently, there are three businesses ongoing at that location. Again, Mr. Guller has owned the property for 37 years. Um, number one, Mr. Guller called me this weekend. Uh, he got no notice of this, but was informed by a neighbor that this matter was going to be before the city council. Uh, Mr. Guller has, at least on two other occasions, opposed restrictions on parking there, and, uh, it is very curious that he never was notified. Nevertheless, um, there is limited parking for businesses in that area. Um, this is basically going to eliminate on, on two corners approximately four parking spots. Um, I understand, um, what, what Council Novoselfsky is saying, that it's a state law, yet I have not seen any other corners or any other streets designated in the meetings of the city council to restrict parking at those corners, only Mr. Guller's corner. Um, it is interesting that the council has mentioned today, uh, giving breaks to people because of COVID, uh, starting evictions, cutting down liquor license fees. Well, here are three businesses in that corner that have been affected by COVID. Um, so instead of the council helping them, the motion is to hurt the businesses or those corners.
Thank you, Councilor.
He's out of order.
Mr. Satin, no, no, thank you, Councilor. Uh, Mr. Satin, I, I understand where you're coming from. I just wanna make, make, make you clear that, uh, this is a request from Council Guanasso to go to the traffic commission if there were gonna be changes, although these, um, it doesn't seem like there would be an ordinance change, because there already is an ordinance. Uh, the traffic commission would then notify, uh, people in the surrounding or butters that would be more involved. So this is just a request from the counselor. Um, it's, it's not, um, there's nothing binding or nothing would be binding yet. Uh, it would be up to the traffic commission and/or the mayor's office, uh, to act on it. Um, so I, but I, I, you know, for all intents and purposes, I think the entire council understands where you're coming from in the sense that, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna be in a position to hurt businesses. And like Council Novoselfsky mentioned, you know, you can go, uh, and look at all of the corners, and I know Ralph DeChico's on it, he's gonna probably bring it up, that it's not just a, a state law, it's a, it's a ADA requirement as well, that, um, there's a lot of them throughout the city. Um, so, um, I think that Council Novos, uh, Guanasso was, uh, concerned with some safety issues. But, um, we appreciate where you're coming from. And, uh, again, there's, there wouldn't be, um, nothing is gonna happen tomorrow. Uh, this would probably need to be further discussed, certainly where there's some butters that would have some, um, um, wants in this. So, uh, I wanna open, allow, uh, Mr. DeChico to talk, and, uh, and then it looks like Mr. Guller has his hand raised again. So, Mr. DeChico?
Thank you, Council President Keith. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what, uh, Councilor, uh, Novoselfsky said. It's not a city law, and it's not an ordinance, it's a state law, and it's a federal law. I also had a question for, uh, the maker of the motion, Council Guanasso, cause I am also, um, getting calls about people parking on not only that sidewalk, other sidewalks. It's, it also comes to the point of, of an ADA, um, violation of parking on the sidewalk, cause you have to have a 42-inch sidewalk with 36-inch clear path. Um, so that's where the 20 feet clearance from any intersection. Um, so it wouldn't need an ordinance change, and I actually don't believe it would have to go to traffic commission. It can just be enforced on any intersection, um, for, for it, uh, for a sign, but also that no vehicles should be on any sidewalk. Um, the state is coming down on that for ADA violations. So I'm, I'm not sure of, uh, Council Guanasso knows if that's a also, also an issue over there on the corner, uh, no parking to corner.
Thank you, Mr. DeChico. And, uh, Mr. Guller? Um, I believe you wish to speak again?
Well, uh, my, uh, we have spoken, uh, thoughts, and I hope you take into consideration of the circumstances that we can all work together and come to some kind of an agreement so everybody's happy today. I'm willing to work with any new people and some type of ordinance, uh, help with the parking. Um, I was down there myself last Monday, just to have a meeting, and there was someone parked on the sidewalk on a site working in front of my building. I asked them to leave. So I am well aware, and I am on top of things. Even though I'm retired, I keep a lookout on my building constantly. People see me out there constantly. I, and always work with the city. So I'm sure, you know, come to some agreement, hopefully, and, and then move.
Thank you. Understood. Uh, Council Guanasso, would you issue, um, uh, further discussion with some of the neighbors and residents of the area?
I'm taken back by, uh, Mr. Guller appearing this evening. I told him this morning that, uh, exactly what the plan was, and, uh, he'd proceeded to hire, uh, a Boston attorney, Jay Satin, who was a dear friend of mine. Uh, you know, I'm doing this not to get at anybody. I'm just servicing the people that elected me. And, uh, I don't know why it's getting this much attention, but Mr. Guller decided this is what the route he wants to take. So fine, that's the route we wanna take. So now, uh, ADAs will be involved, the state will be involved, and Art Guanasso will sit back and just watch, uh, business as usual. Thank you.
So Council Guanasso wishes to send this to the traffic commission? Okay. All in favor? So ordered. Mr. Guller, this will be sent to the traffic commission, and then again, there'll be, uh, opportunity for public input. Thank you.
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor requests the DPW to clean and stripe the empty lot at the corner of Wave and Dolphin Avenues to provide additional parking for residents in this densely populated neighborhood and for residents of the Liston Towers. Uh, this parking lot can hold approximately 20 vehicles.
Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's, it's not only, uh, it's a densely populated, um, area, but there's also a major sewer renovation going on right now, and a lot of people are losing their pocket spaces, and they have no place to park. So this lot is, there's only like two or three cars in there at a day, on a day. So if we cleaned it up and striped it, I think people would use it if they didn't have a pocket space that lived around there. So that's all, I'm, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKenna. Any of the councils? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Councilors Visconti, Guanasso, and Serino that the mayor requests the parking director to appear before the city council to discuss the details of the citywide permit parking program that will be going into effect on October 15th.
Council Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as you're well aware, uh, the, the parking program, the overnight parking program's gonna be launched, I believe, October 15th. I think, uh, some postcards have been sent out, but I think it's, uh, only, uh, fair to us as well as the, the residents to have the, uh, parking director come in front of us and, you know, tell us more about the details that's gonna be happening, cause I'm sure we're gonna be answering some calls. So, um, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Guanasso, Council Serino?
I think Council Visconti handled it well.
Right. Council Serino, great. And, um, just to mention, again, this is, um, this is gonna come fast and furious, but this has been, uh, probably a five-year process through the council and through the city, and, uh, we're excited to see it happen. Um, but the, the city is going to be launching an information campaign, um, that'll be postcards, so, online, Revere TV, newspaper, advertisement, communication, communication, and then there'll be a, a leeway or a, a, a small period where there'll be some forgiveness, and then it's gonna come. So, um, please pay attention, and, uh, you'll get the information. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Councilors Serino, Janino, and McKenna that the city council forward the attached letters to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection as commentary on the 2020 through 2030 solid waste master plan. The Department of Environmental Protection is required to develop and maintain a comprehensive statewide master plan for solid waste management, which the agency updates on a 10-year planning cycle. In September 2019, Mass DEP issued its draft 2030 solid waste master plan for public comment. The public comment period has been reopened to focus specifically, but not exclusively, on issues of environmental justice, climate change, and the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic as they relate to solid waste management in Massachusetts. The attached letter addresses concerns with the Saugus incinerator as well as the rising cost of recycling.
Council Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will first defer to, uh, the representative-elect.
Just go in, just go in, order.
If, um, but after, if, okay, all right. So, um, Mr. President, I filed this motion in conjunction with, uh, Council Janino and Council McKenna, uh, because the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is seeking comment on their solid waste master plan, which, uh, was pretty much described in the motion. But basically, this attacks Wheeler Brede Saugus, that incinerator that's right across the Romney Marsh. Um, as the Ward Six Counselor, I'm actually finding that the incinerator is not only affecting Riverside and the Point of Pines, but also, uh, residents who live right on the marsh in North Revere. They can see the smoke coming, and they, they also get, uh, the odors as well when there are issues there. So second to the, the incinerator itself and, um, issues with, uh, requesting potential closure, there's also in the solid waste master plan, they're going to be addressing rising recycling costs, because Revere is facing, uh, we've, we've nearly doubled our, uh, recycling costs in the last few years, and they continue to go up. And that's not just unique to Revere, that's in a lot of cities across the Commonwealth. So the Mass DEP is aware of this, and they're going to be, um, trying to come up with concrete action steps that could help to reduce the cost of recycling. I know, um, many of the Ward councils probably get these calls too. Just to shift for one second on recycling, um, I know that we as a city are enforcing recycling, and yes, it, it's, it's, it's annoying to not have your recycling picked up, but it is, uh, that the program that the city is doing to enforce the recycling regulations is important, because we are, what's happening and why we need to enforce the recycling, um, is because when we send recycling to the, um, recycling plant, a lot of what we sent before we started this enforcement program would essentially be turned away, and we have to pay as a city for the, uh, recycling essentially be turned away, and we have to pay as a city for the recycling, the contamination that goes in. So although it's annoying to residents, that's why the city has enforcement, but that's why I put this letter together in part to address that. Because if the state can put a solid plan forward that could reduce recycling costs over the next 10 years, then hopefully that will bring our costs as a city down, which in turn will mean we won't have to do as much enforcement, and it won't be an annoyance on the average taxpayer. So again, Mr. President, I hope that I will have the, I hope that we will have the support of the council on this letter. And after, after we take this up, I would ask that it be taken on a roll call, and then I would ask for suspension of rules for reconsideration, because this letter is due to the DEP by 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. So if we could, we'll vote on it tonight, and then reconsider in the hopes it would not prevail. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Do you think anyone here, oh, I get what you're saying. Now we know where you're coming from. All right, Counsel Janino?
Good catch, Mr. President. Thank you. I want to start by thanking my colleague, Counselor Serino. He covered a lot of great points on this, and I'm not going to be repetitive, but I'm going to touch on a couple of things that he didn't talk about. So Counselor Serino and I are both founding members of a group called the Alliance for the Health and Environment, and that's a group of Saugus and Revere and Lynn residents that are concerned about Wheeler Brader. And the DEP actually had one of those open forums last week, which I joined, and spoke on this issue. And when you look at the big picture of this issue, environmental justice, our incinerator in Revere, COVID, our own health issues, there's a correlation between all of these issues. And at the end of the day, when you look at the city of Revere, and you look at parts of East Saugus, they're directly impacted by Wheeler Brader. You'll see higher rates of lung issues, and you'll also notice that Revere, Saugus, and Chelsea were all in the red for COVID. You can't help but think that there's some correlation with our health between those environmental factors that we have in this community. Revere has the airport, we have Wheeler Brader, we have so many issues that are just putting us in a really bad position. So I spoke on that in terms of the city of Revere being a community that's impacted by environmental justice and injustices. And also, you know, we need to think smart, because we can talk about having no solid waste by a certain year, but at the end of the day, if we don't come up with alternative solutions, we're not going to get there, and we're not going to figure that out. So I really support this. I'm also putting a letter on behalf of myself, but I would love to be a part of this on behalf of the entire council. So thank you, Counselor Serino, for including me on this, and also for anyone that has any questions about recycling. When I was in that forum, they brought up a great resource. It's called recycle-smartma.org. And on that website, you can go on and check if it's something that you can recycle before you put it in your recycling. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going in a couple of directions. First of all, I have BU and Tufts University doing an air pollution study at my house for the airport, and I suggest that maybe we can follow up with them and see if they could do an air study at Wheeler Brader. The other thing I'd like to say is Romney Marsh is one of four urban saltwater marshlands in Massachusetts. We're losing them little by little. They house a ton of different species of wildlife and birds, fish. It's critical to our environment to have the marshlands here, but little by little with all the development and Wheeler Brader filling in landfills on this marshland, we're losing them, and we need them. So it's very critical that we stop them from filling in more landfill with solid waste, and just to protect the environment that we live in. But also, I'd like to ask Counselor Janino and Serino, maybe we could talk to Tufts University and BU. They do have a machine that studies pollution. I don't know what kind of pollution, I think it's emissions in carbon monoxide, but maybe we can ask them if they could set up their machine somewhere in Point of Pines and evaluate the air quality.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been down to Mills Avenue, Riverside, getting calls, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00. The smoke and the contamination coming out of the Wheeler Brader facility is horrendous, not to mention the noise. We've had situations where we've had grinding effect noise going on down there for two, three days, even a week. The only way that plant is ever going to be closed is for Governor Charlie Baker to pick up the phone, call the DEP, and say, listen, you're going to close it, I want a date certain, whether it's three years, five years, whatever it might be, when that is going to be closed, and find other alternatives to get rid of the waste. My understanding is now that it costs, the tipping fees are more on the recyclable material than the trash that's going into Wheeler Brader down there. So I mean, there's a lot of different areas we have to look at, and I think we've had more meetings over in the town of Saugus, and I think Counsel Janino will attest to that. The only way it's ever going to happen, in my opinion, is for the governor, whoever that might be, whether it be Charlie Baker or someone else, to pick up the phone, call the DEP, and say, listen, I want a plan and a date certain as to when that plant is going to be closed and where the trash is going. Is it going to cost more money to cart that trash away? It probably is. But you can't measure public health against dollars. It just doesn't work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. And we have an attendee wishing to speak, Mr. Lampadecchio?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43, Tapley Avenue. I think Counsel Powers nailed it. You can't put a price on public health, and Wheeler Brader has been a violator for many years. So I just wanted to take a moment and go on record supporting the motion and to thank the council for putting this motion forward. Thank you, guys, for playing for Riverside and Pines.
Thank you, sir. So all in favor? Aye. So ordered. And Counsel Serino, reconsideration?
Yes, on reconsideration, Mr. President, in the hopes that it will not prevail. Reconsiderate, all in favor of reconsideration, in hopes it does not prevail?
Aye.
So ordered.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Calendar number 31, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor requests the Board of Health to appear before the city council to provide an update on COVID-19.
Madam Clerk, I spoke to Counsel Rotundo. He asked me to take this up for him tonight. And I also, before the meeting, I ran into Ms. Director Hampton and the mayor. They both were very, seemed very good in scheduling a Zoom with all of us to go over their COVID-19 response, as they have in the past. So if you're all amicable to that, we will have a schedule sent out that works for everybody, and we can get as much information as we'd like. So all in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 32, and there's been some wording changes on this. It reads as follows, motion presented by Counselor Serino, that the mayor consider the feasibility of providing additional blue trash carts to residents at cost.
Counsel Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, the original motion had me drop the price from 75 to 50, but I requested that we provide the carts at cost. So basically, I filed this motion on Friday morning after a conversation with a resident who got a $25 fine because it was overflow trash week, and he had placed a barrel in, a bag in the barrel, but he did not close the cover of the barrel, and he ended up getting a $25 fine. And with COVID, he said his kids are home, you know, they're all working from home. And basically, I just feel that, you know, the perception out there is, with the trash cart program, is that we're trying to make a buck off of residents. And I know that's not the case, and I know it's not a popular political opinion, but I'm actually in support of code enforcement on the trash, because it does prevent rodents, and it does make our city look better when bags aren't, you know, next to trash barrels, on top of barrels, and whatnot. So I think a fair kind of compromise would be to show the citizens of the city that, look, we're not trying to make a buck off of you. If we, instead of $75, if we can provide the additional blue trash cart at cost, I think more residents may be apt to buy it, even if it's, you know, $10 or $15 cheaper. You know, I'm certainly not looking for the city to lose money on them, because then that would cost the taxpayers money, and I don't want to do that. But I would like to see if we could just get it down to at cost, and I think that would be a goodwill gesture, and maybe more residents, more homeowners would be more apt to purchase that second barrel. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Just so you know, and Counselor, before you were on, when they initiated this process, the original fees were going to be $150 for a trash cart. So it takes into consideration the cost of the cart, but also the amount of trash that gets taken each year, right? So clearly, it costs a lot more to take trash all year long from an additional cart than 150 or 75, or whatever it may be. But the way to charge only 75 was actually, that was a discount when we had brought it down. I don't believe, I mean, we can look it up, I don't believe you can buy those carts for $75. I mean, you look online, they're 120.
That's true. So when I looked, I'm sorry to, you have the floor.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, and you know this, $75 is a deal. And, you know, anywhere you go, you get a rolling 55-gallon heavy-duty trash cart, they're 120 bucks at Home Depot, Uline, wherever it may be. So I would be willing to bet that the city is probably paying maybe more than $75, or right about that. This is only trying to just, like, kind of balance it. And then, of course, the tipping fees, you know, we're trying to keep it so that you're not having unsanitary conditions, you're solving or helping solve the rodent control issues that we've had as a city, which have gotten so much better over the last year and a half, and kind of balance not having to charge residents to take trash, because a lot of cities around us charge to take trash, additional taxes. The good news is, but, you know, that, we're not charging to take trash. The bad news is, no one, like, we don't want to see any of our neighbors, residents, getting charged $25 ticket because their trash bins up this much, you know? You would hope that there's a little bit more, you know, sensibility in that. You know, if it's overflowing, it's falling over, it's disheveled, sure. But when, and I think the same resident, who was a friend of mine, messaged you, messaged me, right? And the trash bin was like this. So you would hope that code enforcement kind of takes a little bit more of a common-sense approach. But I would be in favor of this motion, but I would think that the trash carts at the cost of the trash cart might be more than $75. So you might be careful. Be careful what you wish. You might get what you wish for.
I understand, Mr. President. And I explained that to him as well, that, you know, we could have, it could be a lot worse. We could be like Malden, where you have pay as you throw, and you have to buy the trash bags from the city. So, you know, it's a delicate balance. I understand that.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Counsel Guanasso?
Mr. President, point of personal privilege, which is very happy occasion, I would like to put on the public records of the Revere City Council, that the Revere City Council goes on record as approving the current elect, our colleague to the new House of Representatives seat in our city, and other, a couple of other towns, Jessica Janino, Representative-Elect. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, everyone.
Wow. We have a celebrity in our attendance, you know? What we can all sit there and say, I served on the council when State Representative Jessica Janino was elected. Congratulations. So just going back to Counsel Serino's motion, all in favor? So ordered. That concludes our business for this evening. We will be back in session on September 28, and we hope everyone has a great night. Thank you very much.